We had a unique shift that drastically altered the course of all the new initiatives that we had planned, and I think everybody did a really good job of refocusing for the betterment of our students. So we'll open up for invitation to speak and staff open for moderator two in case anybody strolls in like they have in the past.
Yeah, so we're actually opening the public hearing, right?
Yep. Have, have, has anyone ever shown up for this? Just totally curious. I've never, I've been to three. It's been like this every time.
I don't, I don't think anybody's ever spoken at one that I've been to.
Have they saved it for town meeting?
When it's, that's right.
Why do you sound now?
Biggerati. Please don't put that in the notes.
Well played.
I will say, yeah, I'll say give it a six fifty, then we'll, we'll close invitation to speak and we'll move on to the vote. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the fiscal year two thousand twenty five Milford Public Schools budget of seventy-three million eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars.
So moved.
Motion by Chris. Second by Michael. Any further discussion? See none. All in favor? It's unanimous. Alright, that concludes this open public hearing for the FY twenty-five budget. You know, motion to adjourn. Motion by Brendan. Second by Michael. All in favor? It's unanimous.
Chris, you made the motion, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So for the minutes, Chris, Chris motion to close the public hearing and approve the budget number.
Yeah.
And then whoever else motioned to close the, I mean adjourn.
Yeah, you're right.
I forgot about that part of it.
So.
Those are two separate?
No.
Motion, motion to, motion to close the public hearing and approve the budget number. And then the second motion was to adjourn.
Alright, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting session of the Milford School Committee. Today is Thursday, May second, two thousand twenty-four, and this meeting is being broadcast and recorded by Milford TV. Copies can be obtained at the request of this board or through central office. We'll start tonight with the MHS student rep update.
So Andrew and I haven't been here in a while. We were gonna come to the April meeting, but we went on a trip to New York for performing arts. So we obviously couldn't make it. But for right now, AP exams are coming up for those of us enrolled in AP courses, so it's pretty like crazy. We're all like trying to cram in our studying and next week and the week after is all like, every day is booked with exams for most of us. So that's sort of exciting, I guess. Um, the Performing Arts Spring and Awards Concert is May ninth, so seniors will get their awards, some underclassmen will get awards, and then all the different groups will play. The MHS Practical Arts will be hosting an arts night on May fifteenth. So that'll have the art classes, the food service classes, the photography classes, and then music. So all the arts like coming together to do like a nice night for everyone.
Yeah, also, um, last Saturday was actually a big day. Um, it was the Spring Beautification Day, which was, um, put on by National Honor Society. A lot of members were there going around in like these yellow vests, picking up trash in Milford. Um, I was a, I was a part of that, too. Um, also, the athletic department had their spring sports cleanup, where we cleaned up the facility. We always find like weird stuff there every year. Like last year, we found a tire. Um, this year, we found an AC unit, um, so that was just like in the woods, so, um, but yeah, it was, it was a great success, a big turnout. Uh, all the sports were there to help and, um, and everything looks really clean now, so it's great. But, um, also, uh, MHS Senior Prom is coming up on May twenty-fifth. Um, it'll be a lot of fun, and the seniors' last day is on May seventeenth, so yeah, excited. Um, one thing that, uh, we've noticed as students is that the lower and upper A bathroom are flooding a lot. Um, they're, they're closed down right now. We have to go to the cafeteria bathrooms, but the, um, genders and custodial staff are doing a really good job working to fix it. Um, and yeah, I'm sure they'll be up and running in no time, but yeah, so that's our update.
Yeah, that's it.
Cool, yeah.
Alright, anybody have any questions or comments?
New York?
New York was great. Yeah, it was a lot of fun. We were there for two days, one night. We went to Broadway. Um, I saw Hadestown, you saw Sweeney Todd.
Yes.
Um, it was a lot of fun. We went to, sort of went to Ellis Island. Um, we kind of had a bus situation.
Yes, we had, we like, we like, we're on a boat and like rode by it, and we're like, wow, look, and then we're like.
But it was fun.
Did you perform there?
No, we didn't.
No, we didn't have like the time, I think, because we were only there for like.
Two days, yeah, a night and two days, but.
Excellent. And Andrew, I know you're leaving us soon. What's next? Uh, what are you planning?
Um, so I, last night, um, at eleven forty PM, I, um, I committed to Villanova University. Um, I'm probably gonna major in communications with a concentration in film, um, and like screenwriting, film production. Um, not really sure what my minor is gonna be yet, but, um, yeah, so I'm, I'm really looking forward to that.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
We'll hear about it.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you very much, and good luck, of course. That sounds like it's gonna be a really exciting time for you, so.
Yeah.
Be a lot of fun. Thank you guys for coming.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Alright, we are moving on to, uh, item number two for the approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes to vote on tonight. Um, the first set is the meeting minutes of April eleventh, two thousand twenty-four special meeting. Anybody have any comments, corrections? I see nothing there, so I'll take a, yes, oh, you're waving. I'll take a motion to approve the minutes from April eleventh special meeting. Motion by Michael.
I'll second.
Second by Chris. Any more discussion? All in favor? That is unanimous. The next set of minutes is from the April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting. Any comments or corrections from anyone else? I have one thing, um, Dr. McIntyre, item four from the chairman update. I just wanted to correct the, the note to make it a little more clear that the update that was shared was to show the tracker style table for the committee, uh, to show the committee requested agenda items, and I'll send that to you in an email. Right now, right now, it, it notes that Dr. Mac, um, Dr. can safely create a table, so I just wanted to correct that. But I'll, I'll get that over to you in email. So I'll take a motion to approve the April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes with the correction to item four, the chairman update. Motion by Robin. Second by Megan. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Alright, uh, three, announcements, correspondence, and distribution. Does anybody have anything tonight? Michael?
Um, so I went to, um, there's a art show from Woodland and Brookside, I'm sure how many grades.
All, all, all.
Also, there's some high schools, yeah, so we're, hard show today from five to eight. I stopped by, my daughter was in, so it was exciting. Um, it was actually very well attended. Also, the spring fling was going on at the same time, so, uh, the cafeteria and the hallways were full of all kinds of students. It was nice to see.
Excellent. I have one thing as well I just wanted to share. I ran into our facilities director, um, probably early last week over at Brookside, and he shared some information with me about the auditorium. I know this time last year, we had some tough times with the seats being broken and some cleanliness, and, uh, and the director and his team have gone through the auditorium completely and came up a very creative solution by taking out a couple back rows and replacing all of the individual broken seats. I run middle with pieces from the back rows, and, um, they did a phenomenal job getting that ready, especially for this time of year. We're gonna start seeing a lot of increased use in that spot, so, um, he was very proud of the work that they did in a short amount of time, and, um, I thanked him greatly for that. I thought that was an excellent solution. I, I do believe that there is also going to be a backfill of two new rows in the back. So we will have a fully functional seating area, um, hopefully soon, but it was, um, it was a great update to hear from him, so I just wanted to share that with everybody. Anyone else have anymore? Okay, so we'll move on to invitation to speak, which I do not see anybody here for that, so we can keep going on to the hiring and introduction of the school business administrator. So on April eleventh, um, as everybody in this room knows, we, we as a committee held a special meeting for the purpose of interviewing Ms. Wen Cobb, who applied for the school business administrator position that will be vacated at the end of this school year. Welcome back. Thank you for coming. Um, if you could, would you mind sharing a little bit about yourself and your professional background?
Yes, um, good evening. Um, first and foremost, it's nice to see everyone again. So, um, I, my name's Wen Cobb. Um, my background is finance and accounting. Um, I'm certified, uh, school business, uh, official in Massachusetts and also certified, um, public procurement officer in Massachusetts. And, uh, over the past, this, over the course of the thirteen years in school finance, I had privilege to work, um, in various districts, um, urban, suburb, and regional, and traditional town district. And, um, I had experience in all aspects of school finance and operations. Um, and, uh, in the past nine years, I have served as the school business official, and, um, currently, I'm holding the position as the Director of Accounting and Business Services at Wellesley Public Schools.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any comments or questions for Ms. Cobb? Michael?
We're really excited that you're here.
Thank you. I appreciate your, your time and consideration.
Anyone else?
And I decided to, um, apply because of, I, I talked to Ms. Perry about the district, and, uh, she endorsed that this is a great, uh, district to work at, and, uh, she's working with a great team, so I'm excited.
Excellent. Thank you.
I'll just add one. It was so great to meet and interview with you. Obviously, you have very big shoes to fill, um, but we were just tremendously impressed with how prepared you were for, you know, the interview when you came in, and also, I just think what a great culture add you'll be. I think you have a, um, a great personal style, and we really even appreciated your sense of humor, so we look forward to having you in the district.
Thank you, Megan.
I saw something. You inspired us. Um, so after your, um, talking to you, you mentioned the Worcester budget book. So Meg sent me a link, and I stayed up till midnight reading it, because I was like, wow, this is pretty intense. Anyways, they had a one-page kind of summary, and we've talked about this over the years of, to our town meeting, give a one-page, and so we asked Dr. McIntyre and crew to actually come up with a, you know, first draft, first version of a one-page, which we actually saw draft today, and we'll be presenting actually at town meeting this year.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're, or, or making impact.
Alright, so everybody had an opportunity, um, prior to this moment to review the contract that we'll be presenting, so what I am looking for is a motion to approve the contract as written, and also to authorize the chairperson to sign said contract with Ms. Wen Cobb on behalf of the Milford School Committee.
So moved.
Motion by Michael. Second by Brendan. Any further discussion on the contract? See none. All in favor? That is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. I will sign the first copy for you now. Does that work?
Yeah, I can sign all three of them.
Sure. Here. Do number six. Thank you.
Oh.
Chairperson update, yeah?
Oh, good. Yeah, so the, um, that one pager is due to the third before May ninth, so we're gonna be submitting that and working with Kevin. So again, we're gonna include it actually into the packet for town meeting, so this is, so a request we've gotten from town meeting, hey, can you give us materials upfront? So this is good, the first that we do, so, uh, it's also corresponding with our, we're gonna be doing a small presentation about the, um, MSBA, uh, admission for the high schools, so it all kind of corresponds. So that's good. Um, that's something Matt and I have been working on, um. Yeah, that's it. There you go. Thank you.
Give me enough time.
Just quickly on that, um, that presentation will be done at the beginning of the town meeting, correct?
Yeah, so I talked to, yeah, I talked to the town moderator. So we have two choices. Well, we can do a little update at the beginning, which I think we should, just the general state of the district, and then we get, um, ten minutes during the warrant articles.
Yeah.
So I figure.
Good night, Wen.
Good night.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Um, so I figured we'll do a small update about the district, this one pager at the beginning, and then, uh, when the warrant articles come up, if the feasibility study and the school building committee will probably do it as a small, like four or five minute, here's where we're at, you know, as Matt likes to put it. We're organizing, and then once the school building committee is formed, then they'll, they'll inform town meeting where we're going and et cetera, et cetera, so.
Great.
Yeah. When we have a draft of that, we'll send it out.
Anything else on that?
Alright, so that brings us to item number seven, which is the School Committee Superintendent Operating Protocol. So this is the annual, um, agreement between the committee and the superintendent on just how we're gonna operate and, and work together. So just for the public, I'll read just a very small section of this to give people a, an understanding. So it says, "As elected members of the Milford School Committee, we, including the superintendent, accept the high honor and trust that has been placed in us to ensure that the students of the district receive the best education possible. In accepting this role, we hold the pursuit of that goal as our sacred duty," and then there are numerous bullets, "but the, the major points are that we will demonstrate professional and collegial relations with one another, dedicate ourselves to establishing and maintaining effective communication, and support the educational welfare and well-being of all students." So again, this is just the typical one pager that we have, and I will have it up here for anybody who, uh, who can sign that as we, um, move forward. So on to number eight, the superintendent's annual reappointment to the Bye County Collaborative.
Can I jump in before you jump into that?
Yeah, please.
Just on that one pager, I just wanna give a shout out to Damian Godat and his students at the high school, who actually, uh, did a lot of the work around graphic design, and they're gonna be updating it as we go through the iteration process, so I just wanted to throw that out there publicly. They welcomed the project. They're, we're excited to be part of it, and, uh, we'll make a few adjustments, and then it should be ready to go early next week.
Great. Are they gonna print them?
Uh, I'm not sure how we're gonna print them. We'll, we can probably print them in-house with one of our copies.
Excellent. By County Collaborative, do you wanna touch on that?
Sure, um, so each, uh, district is required to have a superintendent sit on the collaborative, or collaboratives they're affiliated with. Um, this is an annual reappointment. It's something I've served on for the past, I think, eight years, and I would be more than thrilled to be part of that process again. And we, um, the benefit of being part of the collaborative, a few things, is we get, um, discounted rates on tuition for, uh, since we're, um, placing the added district through Bye County, and there's also connections around professional development and a few other benefits through the senior floor. And they're actually a phenomenal organization to be feeling.
Yes, it does. So I'll look for a vote to appoint. Motion by Brendan. Second by Megan. Any discussion? No? All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. So next up is the MPS Policy Review, so we're gonna review the second reading for file J L C E Medical Awareness Policy. Does anybody have any thoughts, comments, or we just can move on with this one? Good to go?
Yeah.
I don't think there was anything last time either. Alright, so look for a motion to approve file J L C E Medical Awareness Policy. So motion by Chris. Second by Robin. All in favor? That is unanimous.
Mike, can I just ask a question on that policy?
I'm sure.
Kevin or Craig, I'm not sure. Do you know if we do like root cause analysis, if someone has a reaction as to the, the reason why and what they were able to access?
I'm not sure.
In terms of like an allergic reaction?
I think we've seen like two notifications this year that someone was taken to the hospital just for a reaction. I'm just curious.
We do generally know what it is, sometimes we don't.
Yep.
Sometimes it's very, most of the time it's pretty obvious, because the student ate something that they were allergic to.
Okay.
Um, there's a, there's been a couple of cases over the last few years that we weren't sure what the reaction was, and just the medical professionals kind of sort of doubt.
Okay.
But generally, I would say like seventy to eighty percent of the time, it's.
A known allergy, a known.
It's a known allergy, and I'd probably even say ninety percent of the time, it's probably a known allergy, and about five to ten, you know. It could be like the first time they try some brew, or there's some environmental thing that they have reaction to.
Okay, thanks.
Good, okay. On to the MSBA School Building Project Update.
Did we vote on that?
Yes.
We did, okay. Just missed up.
Do you have any update for the?
I do, I do.
Yeah, no problem.
I'm just, uh, tick behind in the note, too. Alright, here we go. So I was gonna say you have two documents in front of you. I actually emailed you this document, which is the initial appliance certification. So our contact at the MSBA, uh, gave us the Milford version of this document. I'm gonna pass it around tonight, but I did send you a PDF of it to look at. I just, I figured, I'm not gonna print out, you know, ninety or a hundred pages. Um, we can just send it electronic, you know, just pass this around to everybody to kind of figure what you got. And that's really requires, I think I said this last time, too, a signature of the school committee chair, the superintendent, the select board chair, or the town manager. The second piece is, um, just the document, and I think what I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna date these successively, and it just has the percentages complete and, um, kind of where we are, you know, process-wise. We've had kind of three meetings in, I think, four weeks, so, you know, there's, there hasn't been dramatic process meeting over meeting, but we, um, we did have the Milford High School faculty meeting about the educational profile questionnaire and the chapter seventy-four vocational technical education viability document, documentation. And there's a couple of things we discussed. One is the potential impact of particularly, particular structures of how the school is organized and potential design. So there's some interest in maybe a house structure that would impact maybe how the building was designed, and there, there's a couple of their, um, structures that, you know, we're kind of exploring. The other piece is, uh, the chapter seventy-four and adding CTE programming, which, you know, and I think we're, we're taking a very serious look at this as we're entering into it, and it could have an effect on just generally the general program studies, depending on how many, um, CTE shops we potentially add or, you know, don't add, and then also access to electives. And so this could also impact what schedules we put in place. Uh, so it could also be part of a larger conversation around changing the schedule with the building, because you only have a certain number of slots, um, in your schedule. So. So again, administration faculty weigh alternatives and the strengths and challenges of the model, but they have senior experience, so. What I can say about the group is there's about, I think, sixty-ish folks, and it stayed sixty-ish folks every meeting. There's a lot of commitment to this process. And, you know, my experience with, you know, big initiatives is you have a lot of interest at the beginning and then it piers out, but, uh, folks have been consistently, um, attending and engaging. We've got one more meeting planned, and then, you know, I think Josh is gonna be the primary, primary author of the educational profile. I think we're gonna work together on the chapter seventy-four piece, and, uh, we've received a lot of feedback, too, so it's been, it's been very good and very worthwhile.
The only thing I think I'll add to that, Craig, you can, um, correct me if I'm wrong, when we visited Attleboro, I believe that a lot of what you just said about the CTE program and, um, and the schedule changes, there was a lot of what they ran into as well. I remember the, the discussion of not just the new building and the additional programming, but also just all of the changes that came along with the schedule shifts of coming into a new building and how it, it was a big transition across the board, but it was a, a long thought-out and planned process. So it sounds like we're right on track with that.
Mm-hmm.
Very good. Alright, anything else?
Yes. I guess when you talk about the house structure, when do you think that we would get a, a kind of a conversation there, and then also the, um, the chapter seventy-four, when they, when, when that's reported to, to us, presentation-wise?
I think we make a proposal to the, um, my, I, I would think June or July we'll, we'll present what we're, we're considering for the application, and I get feedback from the committee. You know, I think it's gonna be part of the, uh, why am I blanking on the term? Feasibility process. I don't know why, that's always front of my mind for me right now. I don't know why I think more towards, but during the feasibility process, they'll look at, um, you know, the different options for CTE as well as different structures based on how you're potentially considering organizing the school.
Right.
So I would say June or July, we'd probably do a presentation.
Okay, yeah, 'cause it sounds like we may have some influence on that if we're, if, where considering the house structure. I'd be interested to hear more about how that is.
And I will, I will emphasize, no decisions have been made at this point. We're, we're in the exploratory process, and the second thing I'll say is, you know, we may come up with a chapter seventy proposal that just isn't financially viable, you know. And can I have one more question?
Absolutely.
Um, and we're also looking at options within eighth grade and without an eighth grade, to just to kind of throw that out there publicly, because I think, you know, there's gonna come, there's gonna come, the cost is gonna come with adding three hundred students to the building, and then the square footage is gonna come in. Which would be another piece of feasibility.
Of course. Wow, this is a big puzzle.
I don't think.
Anything else? Anybody? No? Alright, thank you very much for that, and we'll move on to the discussion around the MHS School Building Committee, specifically the formation of, of what the committee's gonna look like so we can get the draft motion in place for the town meeting.
Um, before we go there, I, I just sent everybody the email, check the phones, too. Um, I did a little graphic for town meeting. Um, it says you are here, so it takes the MSBA process in just a little tag. I just want something super visual for town meeting, because, um, as Matt and I have crawled through the community yet, talking to former SBC members and whatnot, and as we go through, a lot of questions like, where's it gonna go? What are you gonna do? It's like, fuck, we have, we're not even in the program yet. Um, so anyways, just food for thought on that one. So, um, uh, based on our forum that Kevin did and some feedback on the first kind of draft of the motion for the school building committee, I met with John Bruce, who was, who was on the former committee, um, talked to Craig multiple times, talked to Patrick Collins, talked to multiple members on other committees, talked to Framingham, Bob Trembley, um, so basically, got some good talks with Kevin, talked to a lot of people, got some feedback. Um, so here's, here's, uh, I think the final draft. I just wanna make sure we should talk about it tonight. Uh, once we finalize this, Jerry will do his wordsmithing, and then that will be the actual motion, um, on the floor at town meeting. So the, the warrant is separate from the motion. The warrant is just like the agenda item, and then there's the actual motion that goes to town meeting. Um, so we can change that motion up to the day of town meeting. Uh, we don't do that. We won't actually, you know, put it in the packet, but, um, but I, I think we should talk about this and, um, take a final vote for the composition of it. Um, so you'll see, if you go to the bottom, it says summary composition. Um, so basically, there are six members that will be from the select board or town boards, four that'll be from the school committee, and that includes us, uh, four from school administration, town administration, right, and then one from the MTA. So that's the kind of high level of composition, and then you'll see the specifics of the fifteen members. Um, the big changes were, um, you have two school committee members, and then we appoint two, but those two, um, have to have relevant experience, and then one has to have, you know, like an engineer, architect, something or other. A select board would, uh, appoint three with relevant experience, and then one of them would have to be a engineer, et cetera, et cetera. And the rest are pretty much governed by the state, so.
Uh, Mike, thanks for putting this together. Um, when I look at this, the whole top half is completely self-explanatory, but when you do the summary, it says six from select boards slash town boards. It's really three from those boards and three residents chosen by those boards?
Yeah, correct, yeah.
And, and these would be Milford residents? That's the other clarity I was looking for.
Yeah.
It doesn't say that, but it's assumed, but.
That's come up. Um, it's assumed. It wasn't on the last board, but, um, I'm, I'm, well, we would have to say those, those appointed positions would have to be Milford residents, you know, because we have the, you know, the superintendent.
No, no, but I mean, the, the.
The appointed.
To the, the school committee appoints, I assume we'd want to appoint Milford residents.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and I assume the select board would. Um, so then the, the school committee points two, and, uh, so to me, it's just like there's five residents, and that summary doesn't really capture that, if you just read the summary.
Okay.
The, the exclamation up top does. I would just.
We're, we're not gonna include this in town meeting. This is just.
This is just for our discussion?
Just, just notes for our discussion.
Okay, and that makes perfect sense.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, just quickly, saying the other five appointed, as John was just pointing out, um, those are, yeah, in a sense, community representatives. So I think that was some of the feedback that you got from that meeting, is that to ensure that there was community representation, can, I guess, can you speak to that quickly, summarize as far as the?
Yeah, sure, um, so.
What we're looking for?
Yeah.
Did a little bit more of it.
You know, the elected officials and the, like, the, the administration, they change. So this is a ten-year project, so, you know, if, um, you know, Chris is on the school building committee as a school committee member, and he doesn't get elected again, because he lost by two votes.
That's too soon, brother.
No, it wasn't, nope, it's good. I'm on this side of it. It's good.
So, um, it, it changes up. So the feedback I got from some of the previous committee members is like, hey, make sure you have a block of like four or five appointed residents who won't change often to keep consistency, right? And hopefully, one of those people would actually chair this thing or co-chair, right? And I was like, oh, that makes a lot of sense, right? Um, but we wanted to make sure it was relevant experience as well, too, right? So that's where that relevant experience came from, so, um, does that answer the question?
It does, yeah, and I think to that point, it, yeah, we're looking at an eight to ten-year appointment, too, so I think that's gonna be really important, that that message gets out. gets out, that this isn't, you know, a three or four-year, you know, type of elected appointment or anything like that. This is an appointment where we saw Woodland, I believe, went close to ten years, and that's, I know that the building, building was occupied well before that, but there was other business that needed to carry on after the building was occupied.
Three years after, right?
Yeah.
Two thousand thirteen it was formed, so.
Maybe, yeah.
That's like ten years.
Probably seven, eight, yeah. Right, but just in general, right? Where it's a, it's a ten-year commitment, you know, with hopes that the people that are going to be wanting to be on the board understand that aspect of it, so.
So I love the "you are here" concept, Michael. I think what might be helpful to share in conjunction with that is sort of a, what does the building committee do? Because that's not going to be in the warrant, and so I think to Chris's point, there will be other subgroups and forums and committees, and just maybe kind of the building committee does this, we will have other groups that are other input that would be sought from this, just to kind of lay it out, so that as people are thinking about who they're appointing, they understand what they're appointing them to.
Right, and I would say that the supporting documentation for the two warrant articles, the goal of that was to be upfront and say, "Here's the building committee, this is their purpose. Here's what the feasibility study money is for," and hopefully clear up, anticipate, right, anticipate as many questions as could be brought to us ahead of time.
Great.
And given that last form, so, John?
I just want to add, I know everybody here is aware, but just for anybody at home that's tuning in, a number of these proposed appointments are mandated, are mandated by the state, so the superintendent, the facilities director, the town administrator, one member of the select board, one member of the planning board, one member of the school committee, and whatever I missed, so it's.
Nine of the appointments, nine of them are actually made by the state.
Any other comments?
Thanks for putting this together.
Yes, definitely. Thank you, you have done a lot of work and called a lot of people. And this is just the start, so.
Mike's good at that.
Yes. Thank you, thank you for the effort.
Yeah, one member was hard to track down, the former chair or co-chair. He's a construction guy, and he wakes up at zero six in the morning, so I got up at six thirty on a Sunday morning and sat for an hour, it was great.
I think he's up really though now. I think he's walking out the door at that time.
All right, so ideally, we would like to formalize the makeup of this, moving on to Jerry for the motion, so I would like to take a vote on this.
I move to compose the School Building Committee as presented of the fifteen members.
Motion by Michael. Second by Brendan. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, I guess we don't have to, we're intent on putting Milford residents, as we discussed, I don't know if that should be in the motion or not.
You know, I think that's actually.
So we can include in the warrant article if you want, or we can make a decision on our board for our appointment.
I think to John's point, I would support including, before it says, for example, three members to be appointed by the select board, maybe that should say, three members of the Milford community to be appointed by the select board.
Resident.
I mean, I think, I think that we're taking it for granted that that would be the mentality, but maybe we can just make that.
By the way, some towns, I don't think I sent, I have a spreadsheet of forty-five school building committees, by the way. And so a lot of them actually have terms like residents of or registered voters, which, you know, I thought was maybe too restrictive, but, so yeah, I'm supportive of that.
I guess a dumb question, how do we verify their residency? Do we have to verify their residency? I'm not opposed to, I just want to, I mean, it's a mandate.
Think if it came to like that they're not residents, then they're.
Then they're off the board.
Yeah.
So we have to include that in the proposal, too? I'm just asking.
No, so this would direct the boards we're appointing to make sure the residents, then the board fit to figure it out.
Yeah, but like, let's say in six months, someone moves.
So we're just expressing that's our intent, and then, like you said, Jerry will properly phrase the warrant article?
Okay. Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a good question.
All right, so somebody want to summarize where we ended on that one? Because I think you lost me. Are we including it, or are we just going to voice that to Jerry?
Yeah, I'll include Milford residents to the appointed ones.
All right.
For both select board and school committee?
Perfect. All right, so I think we need to clean up that motion and by defeating it the way you read it. So all in favor?
There wasn't even a second. There was a second yet.
No, I seconded it, but.
Oh, you did second?
Yeah.
All in favor? All right, that is defeated. There is no in favor.
So why make a motion?
Again.
For the composition of the School Building Committee to be the fifteen members and the five appointed members to be Milford residents.
Motion by Michael. Second by Robin. Any more discussion? I see none, all in favor? It is unanimous.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael.
Okay, we'll move on to the audit findings progress. Liz Berry?
Sure. So what you have in front of you is essentially the audit recommendations that the CPA recommended, and I have noted areas that have been completed and areas that are ongoing. One of, some of the areas that are ongoing, I think, will be part of the transition with when my replacement, and because really she's essentially going to have to manage these changes and how she would recommend that she's comfortable with them. One of the areas that Carlos, in his role, has kind of set a standard that he does, which I think is very helpful, and he doesn't do it by any reason other than, I think, his own fulfillment of progress. So he essentially will take pictures of the before and then the after, so, you know, every day I'm getting afters, and so I think that really should be a component of these recommendations, because it really is almost a catalog of the progress that he has made, and it's substantial this year. And so I'd like to somehow get that wording in and working with when over the next couple weeks, months, to fill those ongoing recommendations. I have heard from the AG and the IG's office, they are in receipt of our audit, and they will give us updates as progress happens with their own review and, I don't want to say investigation, but, so that's where we stand right now with the progress of the audit findings.
Very good. Any questions? Robin?
So I just see that we filled the vacant facility director's position, so was that making the assistant director?
Yeah, so I can answer that one. Yeah, so we just moved Carlos's title to, from assistant director to director.
Okay.
So Kathy, for the items where it says ongoing, that means we're doing it and we'll continue to do it? So it's already in place, is that how to interpret that?
The documentation that he's recommending, I think when should be a part of that, so that she has something she's comfortable with working.
Okay.
So her and I are going to get together to get that attachment piece, that, you know, whether she wants it with her purchase order, the invoice, however, she's going to feel fit moving forward with that.
So for example, considering requiring vendors to include POs, have we?
That is in place, yes.
Okay.
That's already in place.
Okay, maybe for the next update, you could just specify, like.
Okay.
Have sent all vendors X, Y, Z as of X day, just to, so we know kind of what will be maybe still to come and what is happening now. I think it might be a helpful clarification. And then I know there was an item around kind of the procurement documentation slash policies. I think we're just going to get a little bit more clarity in terms of, these are the policies we have today, and then maybe your sense of what we should think about developing in conjunction with when coming on board, just kind of what are the gaps are in terms of what exists today and what doesn't?
Sure.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Rob.
Anyone else? Chris, I forgot last meeting to ask you to share your visit around this. Can you do that?
Yes, as far as my, yeah, my meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so I guess I had formal informal meeting with Chief Rob Tesino. I had reached out just to see if Milford Police Department was aware. I know that the audit findings was AG, IG, we never, it never really specified local. So I just reached out to Chief Tesino, said, "Are you aware of it, or can we meet?" So we met, obviously gave the subject matter. They, yes, the Milford Police Department and their investigation department is well aware of it. They are in communication with the AG and IG's office, like, the AG and IG's office would actually communicate down to them. So if they feel like they need investigative work, that Milford Police Department would be the ones that would assist in that investigation processes, in a sense, boots on the ground. So good conversation. Like I said, they're aware of it, which I assume they were, it just reaffirmed that.
Awesome. Thank you, Chris. All right, thank you very much for that update on the audit findings. On to the report of the Assistant Superintendent for Business and HR.
Yes, I have for the committees approved with this evening, two warrants in the amount of seven hundred fifty-three thousand, six hundred eighty-three dollars and forty-two cents.
A motion to approve the warrants? Motion by Megan. Second by Chris. All in favor? Is unanimous?
I also have a request for cost reimbursement in the amount of fourteen thousand, eight hundred twenty dollars and sixty cents.
Motion to approve. Motion by Megan. Second by Brendan. All in favor? Is it unanimous?
I also have a list of the latest appointments from our previous meeting, and for your review I also have a request from Principal Ottlin, which is a requirement of our student activity policy, that any time there's a dormant account, the school committee is responsible to approve the purpose of those funds. So we do have a dormant account, and it has been dormant for over seven years, so we're carrying the balance. And Principal Ottlin is looking to request the four, one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars to be transferred to the honor society of the foreign, world language honor society, sorry, which essentially, the funds were in the carnival, which was celebrating the cultures, and so this is a great purpose, and it makes sense to move it to the active account in the amount of one thousand four fifty.
Motion to approve. Motion by Brendan. Second by Robin. Any discussion? See none, all in favor? Is it unanimous?
And I have a request, which I hadn't given much thought to the prop, the project for the softball field lighting, which we currently pay for the electricity of that account. So it would, I would recommend, as it stands, that the school committee, which currently we do not permit that field, the Parks Department permits that field. So I think that should come under the school committee permitting, so that we can possibly review our existing field use policy and bring that under the account in terms of outside groups that may want to rent that account, and it would make sense that we bring that into our control in terms of permitting and invoicing.
One question to that, who does the permitting for Woodland?
We do.
We do. Okay, so is this the only field that is not school property?
And it never has been, Matt. I don't have any of the background on it, but it did come to light in terms of, you know what, now we have very expensive lights that we need to make sure it gets considered.
We don't permit right now the backfield at the high school.
Who does?
Parks. But this might be a good time to probably pull it all in.
I'll, I'll share that I did have a discussion with the Assistant Director of Community Use around this, and the sentiment from him was the same, was that generally with the way the fields work, especially the school fields, it's high school priority, community use, and then third party. And the biggest concern is if we have too many directions, people are looking into permit these spots, we could run into a conflict, and then obviously, no one's going to try forcing kids or anybody else off the field, but it turns into a scheduling kind of nightmare. So the, the request from, from that side as well was to take it all in if we could, as a committee if we wanted to, to bring it into one place. And to take it further, the Assistant Director did speak that they would be willing to take on the ownership of the permitting process to be able to manage it, but that is obviously something that I think we would let be worked out with Central Office and whoever else is doing that.
I think it should just stay, right now, we have the permitting under our field calendar, and Central Office does the invoicing, so, and then we do the receipts, so it would make sense that it would just stay within the permitting of the Central Office.
Has anybody talked to Parks? Do they care?
I don't know that anybody's talked to Parks. Not to Marsight.
I haven't talked to them, but I can't imagine they would care.
Yeah. I can make that call if you'd like.
Yeah.
Robin has a.
So at this point, has the Parks Department been charging Milford residents for use of those fields?
I really don't know what Parks does. I know they manage the permitting. I don't know if they charge a fee, it's never come to light. Really, the real concern is around the, the new field lights.
I believe it's for specifically, like, if you have a private, I'm just going to go this way, it's through my brain, goes a private soccer club coming in and want to use the high school field, something like that. So I think it would be private softball leagues and stuff like that that would be coming in.
The reason I raise this is recently, at a policy meeting, we were looking at the policies around the different facilities we do have, and so if this were to be a motion and a vote, we can talk under further agenda item, future agenda items, I would request that as policy subcommittee, we then look at updating the policy to include these fields and looking at the fee structure around those as well.
Sure. John?
Yeah, I'd agree with that. I mean, we already have a policy, an extensive policy on use of the tariff and a fee schedule, and it should go in place for, it should be put in place for all of the outdoor facilities.
Absolutely.
We're already doing Woodland, we should do, we should do softball and the backfield.
Good.
You know, along with the rest of the use of our buildings, it should be, it should all follow with the administration, in my opinion.
I agree.
Does this change any of our responsibilities for the maintenance of the softball field and backfield, if we're going to do backfields as well?
It seems to change in the field responsibility.
Would it be, okay.
It's pretty well.
Either financial or physical.
It shouldn't. I can say that I feel strongly about that.
I was just curious.
If the committee does approve this, I would like to ask Melissa to, in fact, include that. We have a policy meeting and a second meeting in May, so I'd like to have that addressed if, in fact, it's approved.
So I would recommend having a conversation with Parks before we go vote, and I think, you know, hitting the policy and then making a vote right after that would be my recommendation. I'd agree.
I just have one more quick question. Currently, the garbage receptacles, who is responsible for those? Is it the school or the Parks Department?
Parks.
Okay, so would that change, like, who's responsible for things like that if we took?
They do it for all of our fields and outdoor maintenance.
Okay.
Do we have a written agreement with Parks, or is it just kind of an unsaid handshake, they'll do certain things?
I don't think anybody really knows how the scheduling evolved.
But anything, outside maintenance, anything, trash, trash, rain, wind.
No, so there is, there is, there's nothing written about that. My best understanding comes from Jerry, the former town council, who said that a number of years ago, going back forty or more, give or take, schools had their own groundskeepers, landscapers, equipment, all that. I mean, when I was here, was the equipment was housed in the basement where Shining Star is, and at some point, it became obvious that it's more efficient if it's done by one group instead of two. You don't need duplicate equipment in a lot of cases. And so at that time, the, you know, the Parks personnel staff was increased, their budget was increased, presumably some of that came out of the school budget, but, you know, I don't have that, those details, but that's how it was best explained to me.
Yeah, I was just curious if there's anything. Thank you. Speaking of that.
That's this guy. Anything else?
No.
So just quick, would we push off the vote, or are you saying it'll at least try to have the softball field brought in tonight because of the lights, and the lights are now on there? Or are we still looking to engage with Parks before, before that part? Yeah, I just wasn't, I just wasn't sure.
I would recommend that if there's been a conversation.
For at least the softball. For at least the softball? I know we added on the backfields, too.
I would say even with the softball, I would recommend, just, I just think it's the right thing to do, to have a conversation for people who change practice.
So...
Go ahead.
I don't necessarily agree with that. I'd be more than in favor of reaching out to Parks, in fact, to discuss how, if all, it affects them, financially or otherwise, but, I mean, if they object, we're going to let, we're going to say, "All right, you guys take care of this part of our school."
Yeah, I just, I would just, I don't know, like, moving the vote, two weeks, we've been having a conversation first with them, I think the outcome's going to be the same. I just think, just have a conversation with the department.
Well, the two weeks isn't an issue, I just don't at all grasp the concept.
I support Kevin's idea. If someone was changing something we're responsible for, I'd like to be informed, so I support that process-wise.
I'll leave that up to you guys right now, if anybody wants to make a motion or not. Now's the time.
I make a motion that we bring the policy to the next policy subcommittee meeting, and bring this back at the next school committee meeting for both.
Okay. Motion by Megan? Second by Michael? Any more discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous? Okay. On to subcommittee updates, are there any subcommittee updates?
I have one thought. I forgot to thank Craig. Matt and I met with Craig today about the School Building Committee, and picked his brain quite a bit. One thing he mentioned, that the administration's already working on the education plan, which is fantastic. Craig, can you explain the, what you did in Woodland in two weeks, and what you're doing now to...
Yeah, so, I think we, I think we talked about, so, the education plan basically drives the design of the building, right? So it's, if you think about all the different components of a high school, it's going to be a pretty substantial report, right? And that's, I think that's what Dr. McIntyre was talking about earlier, with the group of sixty people, and Josh will be the primary author, with other people feeding into it. We have, I think we have an enormous jump when I think about how it went down at Woodland. You know, basically, we didn't think about it beforehand, and it was, "All right, we're going to get this done, and here's the timeline, it's in two weeks, so let's get it done."
Yeah, I want to think the whole team, it seems like a really big collaborative, a lot of people, starting before we even accept it, so.
Yeah.
My little subcommittee thing. And I would say, like, high school is just as entities, are much more complex than the elementary school, so, just based on the numbers and...
It looks like there are no other subcommittee updates, we'll go on to future agenda items.
You already have my list. No?
Do you have a community use budget on there, Matt? I told you, they don't have that in front of me. I know that was one item we talked about, and you probably do.
I do have community use budget on there, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, we'll move on past that, before anybody adds to it. Brings us to adjournment, so we do have one executive session scheduled for tonight, related to discussions around the ASPY contract, and we will not be returning to open session, so I will start a roll call vote with Chris.
Yes.
John?